I call this meeting to order. This is a commission meeting of April 26, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the Sussex County Administrative Center in the Commissioner Room on One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Here.
Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
We have a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Therefore, as our public statement pursuant to Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, at a quick notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail in email and such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following, the New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger. And is also posted on the bulletin board maintaining the Administrative Center for Public Announcement has been submitted to Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please use all electronics. Number five is the approval agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Space, do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Close, staying, carries. Number six is proclamation certificates and presentation. Herb, you're going to read this proclamation. This is a Recognizing April Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Anyone?
Yes, Jim.
Jim is here, okay.
Jim's here from Daisy. Jim, how do you say your last name?
I said it.
That's what I said.
(laughing). And whereas sexual assault awareness month is set in chapter 23 of the law study and a public health implication for every citizen of Sussex County. And whereas New Jersey is home of 1.8 billion survivors of contact sexual assault and sexual violence touches all of our lives. Whereas every 68 seconds, another American is sexually assaulted. Child and child protective services agencies contain or found strong evidence to indicate that in the United States, 62,000 children who were victims of sexual abuse crime by the county's municipal surveys. And whereas we dedicate ourselves to addressing the core causes of sexual violence and ourselves with destroying algorithms of sexual violence. Whereas the leadership, community action, and personal commitment, we will reduce sexual violence in Sussex County throughout through prevention and education, increase awareness, and hold predators accountable for their actions. And whereas Sussex County strongly supports the efforts of the nation, nations, state, and local partners and commitment of every citizen to actively engage in public and private activities to prevent sexual violence, to help survivors receive services, and to empower our society to work together to prevent sexual violence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Fourth Commission appoints community across the country in playing an active role to prevent sexual sexual violence. Along with the United States government and the state of New Jersey, hereby proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month by the order of the Fourth Commission Director, Deputy, and Fantasia.
William Hayden, do you have a second? Thanks, everyone.
Would you like to say something?
Yeah, thank you Commissioners, you know, for supporting Daisy in honoring Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whether it didn't cooperate with this, this year we have a closed line event every April in honor of Sexual Assault Awareness Month at Newton Green. And we have over 200 t-shirts hanging related to over the last 25 years leading up to the prevention and education that's been going on with sexual assault. Daisy takes in about 1,500 calls a year on our hotline. 1,300 or so are domestic violence related. And over 200 have, on average, are sexual related. So this is going on in our community. It's isolated to a person. On a personal note, I have a family member who endured sexual assault. Never said a word for years, for longer years, and it was decades later before I finally got out there. And I can see, I can speak to the long-term effects, the terrible effects that this sexual assault has on individuals. So I appreciate your time. And I hope we can all keep the victims of sexual assault aware in our lives, in our hearts. And this 224 calls last year, we keep doing the work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to get a quick picture with everybody? Would you mind taking a quick picture with the Commissioners? Jill Bill? Jill Bill? Flag, no flag?
Pick up the seal.
Flag, no flag?
The seal, if you have it, down the middle.
The seal.
You're worried about getting the picture and that they got me in there. (laughing).
Did we give you a good sign?
There ain't no good sign.
All right. Number seven is a public hearing. It is the final adoption ordinance 23-02. At a regular meeting held on April 12, 2023, we introduced the first reading of the following ordinance, which was advertised in New Jersey Herald, issue of April 16, 2023. Together with a public notice, a public hearing stated it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Capital ordinance providing for general capital improvements in the acquisition of certain capital equipment in and for the County of Sussex. State of New Jersey is appropriating $6,930,342 from the county's capital improvement fund to pay for the cost thereof. I have a motion that the public hearing be opened.
So moved.
Mr. Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Close, staying, carries. Is there anyone here that needs to be heard of this ordinance? All right. Seeing no one, do you have a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Mr. Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, staying, carries. Do you have a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted?
So moved.
Mr. Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Yardley, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, staying, carries. All right, now I need a motion that this resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted. And also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center.
So moved. Oh, roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right. It is the final adoption of ordinance 23-03. At a regular meeting held on April 12, 2023, we introduced the first reading of the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald, issue of April 16, 2023. Together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. The bond ordinance providing for various 2023 capital improvements buying in the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $4,88,402. Therefore, in authorizing $3,883,000 bonds or notes of the county to finance part of the cost thereof. I have a motion that the public hearing be opened.
So moved.
Mr. Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, staying, carries. Is there anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? All right, seeing no, can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Mr. Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Space, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, staying, carries. All right, I need a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted.
So moved.
Mr. Space, Mr. Hayden, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, close, staying, carries. All right, that this resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted and also post same on the bulletin board in lobby of the County Administrative Center. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right, C is the final adoption of ordinance 23-04. At a regular meeting held on April 12, 2023, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in New Jersey Herald, issue of April 16, 2023. Together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of 2023 capital improvements at and for certain facilities of Sussex County Community College located within the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $2,224,000. Therefore, in authorizing the issuance of $2,224,000 bonds or notes of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey for financing such appropriation, the principal of an interest on the aggregate principal amount of which will be entitled to state aid pursuant to Chapter 12 of the laws of New Jersey of 1971. I got a motion that the public hearing be opened.
So moved.
Mr. Hayden?
Second.
Commissioner Space, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, staying, carries. Is there anyone present to be heard on this particular ordinance? All right. Seeing none, can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Mr. Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Space, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, staying, carries. All right, do you have a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted?
So moved.
Mr. Space, Mr. Hayden, seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, staying, carries. Motion that this resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted and also post same on bulletin board in lobby of the County Administrative Center. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Thank you. Lot of reading. Number eight is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up after microphones, state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. And a motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Space?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, staying, carries. For anyone that would like to make a statement on agenda topics? No? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment? So moved. Mr. Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Space, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, staying, carries. All right. Number nine, Commissioners' comments. Mr. Hayden, would you like to start?
Sure. Sussex County Farm and Horse Show is in preparation for August dates of the fair this year, August 4th through August 12th. For this year, the big change will be the hours and the air as follows. First Friday will be 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The Saturday and Sunday following, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Monday through Friday, the 11th, weekdays, 12 noon to 10:00 PM. And on the last Saturday, there will be no Sunday. The last Saturday is 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Slogan this year is "More to See in 2023", and the Farm and Horse Show is planning to build on many of great free events and performances from last year. And they're working to make some significant improvements to the outdoor entertainment area, hoping to have some new events to look forward to this year. So the municipalities will be receiving information shortly regarding their participation in the county building and the displays they will set up. It is Celebrate National Library Week, April 23rd to 29th. And we have a library system in the county which receives over more than 60,000 visitors in just the first, tomorrow, first three months, 2023. More than 4,000 coming in for programs as diverse, delectable delights, clubs it meets and eats the first Monday of each month, Dennis Branch. Libraries play a critical role in our economic vitality. The community is providing internet and technology access, literary skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. All the Sussex County Library locations have wireless printing, which we had mentioned in earlier meetings, capability to scan and fax documents, while the main library office poster and banner printing as well. The Sussex County Library system also provides access to helpful databases such as the person, Pat Peterson's Task and Career Prep, EBSCO Small Business Reference Center, which puts thousands of business reference books, videos, full text articles, and information about tactics and center searchable by state right at the user's fingertips. So if you haven't checked out your local library, stop at one of the local library branches. And also pertaining to libraries, library exhibit artist Joanne Daniels celebrates her 50 years with the Sussex County Library System. Joanne Daniels started work with the main library of the Sussex County Library System, April 23, 1973, and never looked back. From her first days as a junior library assistant in the Technical Services Department to her present-day duties of creating monthly calendars, flyers, posters, and bookmarks for hundreds of programs at the Sussex County Library System provides its cheers. Ms. Daniels has been dedicated, creative, hardworking, always willing to learn new things. Library patrons aren't the only ones who've enjoyed her artwork. Ms. Daniels has also been responsible for designing, mounting, and maintaining the Sussex County Library System booth displayed at the Sussex County Farm and Horse Show at the Jersey State Fair for the past 34 years. Ms. Daniels is taking her well-earned retirement at the end of April, and she will be sorely missed. She's more than a talented artist. She's our institutional memory, our heart, and our stomach as well. Smiled library director, Will Porter, referring to the many staff luncheons and teas Ms. Daniels plans. An anniversary celebration was held at the main library on April 24th where Ms. Daniels received a congratulatory letter from the governor's office, a certificate of special senate recognition signed by Senator Menendez, a citation from the State and General Assembly signed by Senator Steve O'Rourke, Assemblyman Parker Space, and Hal Morris. County Commissioner Chris Carney spoke in celebration and was also attended by county administrator Ron Tappan, county treasurer Elka Yada, county clerk confidential assistant Christine Yar, Chris Kinnearmark, and retired library director Harold Nuschafer spoke about Ms. Daniels' career. Will Porter and see. And that's all I've got. Oh, one other thing. There was a rally up at the Newton Green the other day, and you could see that the buildings or people had done a lot of work to the thing. So Keith should get a thank you. It really came out nice when they did.
I saw that, yeah.
They really fixed up that gazebo nice.
Yep. Very nice. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Space?
Division of Health Mobile Medical Clinic. Sussex County will be receiving a mobile medical clinic through the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding as authorized by the Commissioners. The mobile medical clinic will allow the Division of Health, Office of Public Health Nursing, to increase health services to Sussex County residents in addition to overall operational efficiencies, promote health and education for the entire community, and maintain a fully stocked clinic ready for immediate response in the event of an emergency. Division of Social Services, homeless prevention. There is a resolution on the agenda tonight for the County of Sussex to utilize American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding for homelessness prevention as authorized by the Commissioners. The Division of Social Services will use this funding to assist Sussex County residents who were financially impacted by the pandemic with back utility assistance to avoid utility shut-offs and financial assistance to retain or relocate their housing to avoid homelessness. For additional information about housing or utility assistance, contact the Sussex County Division of Social Services at 973-383-3600 or visit the agency at 83 Spring Street in Newton from 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. New Jersey Medicaid redeterminations resumed April 1, 2023. As of April 1, New Jersey Medicaid redeterminations resumed as federal public health emergency continual enrollment provisions terminated. Sussex County residents enrolled in a New Jersey Family Care program will be reviewed to see if they still qualify for coverage. Families can take action to avoid losing coverage. It is important that New Jersey Family Care recipients confirm that their most current address and contact information is on file in order to ensure they receive any correspondence regarding their healthcare coverage. If a family receives mail from New Jersey Family Care Medicaid, they should respond promptly. Beneficiaries can update their contact information by calling New Jersey Family Care at 1-800-701-0710. If residents would like to obtain additional information or have questions related to the Medicaid redetermination process, please contact the Sussex County Division of Social Services by calling 973-383-3600 or visiting the agency at 83 Spring Street in Newton during its hours of operation on Monday through Friday from 8:30 until 4:30. I would like to just apologize for being sick at the last meeting. I'm missing it. I hate to miss a meeting, but I was sick. And today, I attended a very nice veterans luncheon along with Deputy Director Yardley, Director Carney, Ron, and Christina. And I just want to thank all of the county employees that helped put that on. You guys do a great job, and it's so appreciated by the veterans. And it was a full house. And it was a really, really great performance by the singers, and everyone had a good time and was very thankful to the county for that. So that's about all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fantasia?
Thank you. To start, the Division of Community and Youth Services. The Division has partnered with the Sussex County Community College, Alpha Arts Institute, to recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month by highlighting the importance of visual, performing, and literary arts and their therapeutic components. They're having a show called Embrace the Elephant in the Room. It's an original visual arts exhibition event, and that'll be on May 3, 2023. This exhibit connects themes of isolation and stigma related to mental health and is featuring artist Maureen Slamer. It's open to the public, and it begins at 6:00 PM in the atrium of the Performing Arts Center at the Sussex County Community College. Families are welcome to attend. Dr. John Connolly, president of the college, will deliver opening remarks. And staff from local service organizations and mental health agencies will be on site to be able to provide information on various services and programs. I have an update for you from the Office of Mosquito Control. As you recall, you know, we've definitely enhanced our services here in Sussex County with the emergence of the Jamestown Canyon virus here in Sussex County, which extraordinarily rare, but canon has been fatal. So the warmer weather and rainfall typically this time of year creates a really perfect environment for hibernating adult mosquitoes to get active and start breeding. Don't know about you, but I have been bitten. So that's how we know spring has sprung. The county received an average of 1 to 2 inches of rainfall during the most recent rainfall event. The least was about a half an inch and the most, over 5 inches of rain. So mosquito staff is working diligently to inspect and treat mosquito habitats to prevent those mosquitoes to emerge after the rainfall. Our program has different types of equipment to control the mosquitoes both in the larval form and in the adult form. All equipment is calibrated each year to ensure that pesticide is applied uniformly and in proper rates. So to tell you a little bit, the mosquito program has four full-time staff members who complete these inspections of the habitats. They also set and collect traps to trap those adult mosquitoes, and they save some of those for testing for disease. And that typically begins in May, so it's right around the corner. The testing data for mosquito-borne diseases, if you'd like to check, we do post that on our website, on our mosquito page. It has its very own page, our division, and it's very, very interesting. It has many, many resources for you to take a look at. Also, the Office of Mosquito Control would like to remind residents to protect yourself and your family by dumping, draining, and disposing of all standing water to eliminate these mosquitoes. And also, to kind of tie into the library, a mosquito biology and control tabletop display is being circulated for display at all of our libraries through May 12th, courtesy of the Office of Mosquito Control. And the display helps to just educate residents as to what they are looking at when they see our fine blood-sucking friends. So keep in mind, keep your eyes out, long pants, et cetera. All right. Next, I would like to share with you that I will be participating in a meeting with the New Jersey Arts and Heritage, I'm sorry, Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council with the New Jersey State Council on the Arts on May 1. So they asked to meet with the program officers, and the director of the Council on the Arts is going to meet with me and director of the Arts and Heritage Council, Carol Yoshamine, and the board leadership. It's an annual meeting that they have. Sometimes, you know, they attend from the state. When they ask me to attend, usually it's to give us some kind of update, some kind of initiative, and kind of let us know where we land on the spectrum. When we had our ARPA meetings, we did discuss that. So I'll bring information back following that meeting to the group on May 1. On Saturday, I was able to attend the Franklin, the annual mineral and gem swap that they have at the Franklin Mineral Museum. You know Franklin is famous, world famous. We are the fluorescent mineral capital of the world. And all types of vendors came. There were minerals, rocks, there were fossils. They were the coolest, in my opinion, where they had like fossilized scorpions and whatnot. They were selling all different kinds of things. They did a dino dig for the kids at night, and it really attracts people from all over the region, not just New Jersey. People come far and wide, hours and hours to participate in this, smack in the middle of Franklin, and it was great. Also, I was able to attend the Taste of Vernon, which is an awesome event this week. Commissioner, Deputy Director Yardley was there as well. And I really like the Vernon Chamber of Commerce[1579.94] And I really like the Vernon Chamber of Commerce and what they do because they take a portion of the proceeds that they make from that event, and they actually choose to apply it to programs that help, again, with mental health, with Mental Health Awareness Month being in May. So I liked that aspect of it, and it was really, really well-attended. They had some nice raffles and whatnot. It was just a really wonderful, wonderful night overall. I do have new business, but as far as I normally give a District 24 update, but I will save that for our new business portion. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Wow, okay.
I know. It's a miracle.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Fantasia. Deputy Director Yardley.
Just want to say, following up on Dawn said about the Vernon event was very nice, absolutely well organized, and something I tend to, it's pretty good. I did attend the Branchville Businessmen's Meeting. I went, they asked me to speak, and I brought the budget, and I'd like to thank Elka for her help in preparing that. And basically, she was able to shrink it down so they could look at it, and could never do it as good as she will. But we went through the budget, and they got to see where their money goes. And I also want to thank Christine and her staff for preparing a list of services. So what I did was I went through that budget with a pass, you know, we went, here's where the pie charts are, here's what that is, here's where your dollar goes, and they're pretty impressed. And then I said, here's some of the services that you get. And we talked about engineering and roads, and they were happy with the budget. So, you know, and went over the costs, what, you know, may happen, and of course, in your town, maybe a little different. So that was a good act, that was a good event. And by the way, their funding, when they have events and stuff, goes for scholarships, and they give out several scholarships. And I think there's a Christmas, I believe there's like a Christmas or holiday party where they give gifts to like, maybe kids and stuff, things of that nature. Most of the, I think most of the places, things we go to, somebody's doing some charity work. Public Health Nursing, Saturday, May 6th, a complete metabolic profile, blood screening, and there's a fee for $50. And this is one of those fiber, I think probably a $500. You had to pay for it yourself. It's an excellent test, includes lipid profile, cholesterol, glucose, liver kidney function test, complete blood count. And that would be on May 6th, Call Public Health Nursing. There were 277 inspections from January to March, 250 food places, 10 recreational bathing places, eight animal facilities. There were 76 temporary food plans, so that shows there's a lot of activity, people getting ready to drive their trucks and different events. And rabies. There were 56 domestic or wild animal bites, and 29 cats, 12 bats, excuse me, 12 cats, three bats, four raccoons, a groundhog, a mouse, a guinea pig, a squirrel. 10 animals were sent for testing, three tested positive for rabies, a raccoon, and two bats, and six people were exposed, so they're going for treatment. And people, and I don't know if maybe on our website, we could do something to make people aware of bats, and now that, you know, summer's coming, and we start seeing a lot more bats, and they need to be careful with their exposure. That's it. Good?
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have some bridge reports to start with. This, this bridge, just to reiterate, was one that we've been working on for a while in Sparta with the water main, that a lot of commissioners, it's like a two-year deal. So it's kind of coming, finally coming in fruition, and it actually got me pretty good. My son was playing lacrosse in Sparta on Saturday, and it kind of got me a little bit. This is on Main Street. Wasn't really happy about it either, but anyway. Replacement of Bridge Q06, and this is carrying Main Street over to Walk Hill River in Sparta. Q06 will be replaced with a widened structure that incorporates sidewalks along both sides of the bridge. Designers GPI, Creamon Peterson Incorporated, and State Line has the contract, and it was awarded for $1,444,694.65. Duration will be March 27th through May 5th, that's weather permitting. What they did already is install the bypass piping. So that's, so everybody continues to get the water, and that was the big problem that was holding us up for literally like two years, actually before my time, I think you guys were working on that, right?
Well, yep.
Yeah, so forever. So only coming to head here, so. And the one thing I always forget to mention, if anybody, because I know I speak fast, if anybody ever wants to know any more information, you can just go to the website, dpw@sussex.com.us, and get some more information. That bridge is going to be full closure Main Street with signed detour. Pedestrian access will remain throughout construction, so it's going to be closed for a while. And that's a culvert. I go pretty quick, but it'll be closed for a while. Sussex County Division of Engineering, this is the Guide Rail Upgrade Program. This is a $1.6 million project, which involves upgrade of guide rail systems by Road Safety Systems LLC and the Morris County Co-op. The contract is nearing completion, and it involved about, plus or minus 30,000 feet of guide rail along County Route 631, Franklin Avenue, 655, Morris Turnpike, and 605, Stay in Hope Sparta Road, at a cost of $36 a foot, which is pretty expensive. And the status of that is County Route 631, Franklin Ave., it's complete, and County Route 655, Morris Turnpike, Hampton Frankfurt, that's complete as well. So the last one we need to do is Stay in Hope Sparta Road, and Sparta Byram Packon, and that's almost complete. So we're almost there, which is good, safety of our drivers. Sussex County Division of Planning and Economic Development, this is a project 2020 and 21, Small Cities CDBG. The Division of Planning and Economic Development is holding two public hearings on Friday, April 28th, for fiscal year 2020 and 21. Applications to review the performance of and receive citizen comments and recommendations concerning the Small Cities Community Development Program Innovative Development Fund. The county was awarded $200,000 fiscal year 2020 and $107,000 in 2021 for the rehabilitation of existing supportive group homes for developmentally disabled adults of low and moderate incomes in Sussex County. This rehabilitation of these groups, homes, will include necessary repairs such as kitchens, bathrooms, flooring, stacks, porches, pathways, doors, and windows that will make them more accessible to handicapped persons, as well as address the safety concerns which currently exist in many of the homes. And we are the status, milestone status, to prepare both public hearings, notice and coordinate publication of advertisements in the New Jersey Herald, coordinate the receipt of and respond to any public comments or recommendations received, provided information on grand process, and conducted and hold a hearing. Moving along. Street sweeping. Be patient with our street sweepers, because I know I wasn't today, that's for sure. DPW staff has worked to complete the first round of street sweeping along 620 lanes of county roads. More information regarding the Sussex County Highway Agency Stormwater Permit, including Sussex County Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, is available at the county website on the Division of Engineering Stormwater Management page by using the following line, So again, they're doing a good job. It's just a little slow, so be careful around those turns. Quick overview, something I always talk about, Lackawanna Cut Off. I just like the project. I think it's going to be a great project, so I'm going to read this rather fast, probably. The New Jersey Transit Corporation intends to reconstruct approximately 7.3 miles of rail line between the existing Port Morris Yard and Roxbury Township, Morris County and proposed rail station in Dover Township, Sussex County, and Sussex County. The project is part of NJ Transit Lackawanna Cut Off Restoration Project. The first phase of the project involves restoration of approximately 8,000 linear feet or 1.52 miles of track roadbed, two culvert replacements, and rehabilitation of the Roseville Tunnel. New Jersey Transit is seeking federal funds through the Federal Transit Administration, or FTA, making the project subject to requirements of Section 108 of the Historic Preservation Act pursuant to 36 CFR Part 800. On February 23rd, 2023, New Jersey Transit initiated Section 106 for the first phase of the project. Of specific concern or design changes regarding the rehabilitation of Roseville Tunnel, Roseville Tunnel was originally a two-lane horseshoe-shaped structure at 1,014 feet located in Dover and Fire and Township. The National Fire Profession Association, NFPA, 130 guidelines stipulates that all tunnels more than 1,000 feet long require mechanical emergency ventilation. Just one more thing to add to it. In order to sustain NFPA definition of tenable environment during a fire event which mechanical, without mechanical ventilation, it was recommended to shorten the tunnel at the western portal by 15 feet. Activities for this first phase of project are as follows, and I'm not going to read them today. We'll shorten that up a bit. On another note, I was able, like Commissioner Hayden said, to join a library, to go to the Frankford Library to congratulate Joanne Daniels. She's been here for 50 years, longer than I've been alive. You guys are alive, I wasn't. She does, she did a lot of handwork pieces before computers, and I mean, it was like hundreds of stuff. It was very, very impressive. I could never in my best day draw like she did, but she likes her job. She really does, and it was nice to see somebody who actually stays here for that long. So it was very nice. Congratulations to Joanne Daniels. While I was there, I put in a work order with engineering, bridge, and, or I'm sorry, signs and whatnot, to fix the potholes that were at the library. There was a safety hazard, and a sign was falling down, must've got hit by a cloud, I'm not sure who that was. But the sign was knocked down. Nevertheless, it was fixed in a timely manner, and I really, really appreciate that because it was a safety hazard. There's a lot of older folks that go there, and we would not want anything to happen to them. I also went to the Franklin Library today. Ron and I met with Keith, and the architect was there. The facade in Franklin, I don't know, don't even live there, it's a mess. It's coming down, and it's going to be just brick-faced. It needs a lot of love. The roof is not, not in good shape. Kind of goes back to what we've been saying, you know, the facilities that we have have been neglected for a really long time, so it's something we've got to keep our eye on for sure. And then Monday, we have Project Self-Sufficiency, which is a Taste of Talent, which is always a good event. I don't know what commissioners are going to be there now, but I'm looking forward to that. There's always good food, and you'll stop eating now, so I can eat it all. That's all I have. All right. Number 10, the approval of the consent agenda. There is no consent agenda. 11 is approval minutes from the regular meeting, April 12th, 2023. I have a motion to approve the minutes from regular meeting. So moved. Mr. Hayden, have a second. Mr. Yardley, any discussion? If they're a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain.
Abstain.
Carries. Number 12, his appointments and or resignations. We have one. This is acknowledging the county administrators' reappointment of John P. Cassiano to the Sussex County Community College Search Committee. I get that name right?
So moved.
Second. Space. Moves. Mr. Fantasia, seconds. Any discussion on this? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain, carries. Number 13 is resolution. I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through G.
I'll make it, Mr. Murphy.
Commissioner Yardley, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Space, seconds. Any discussion?
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right. 14 is awards of contracts, change orders, and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders, bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that the adoption of the said resolutions is and will further the public interest. I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through F.
So moved.
Commissioner Space?
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
15 is financial. We have one. This is resolution payment of bills list from April 26th, 2023. I get a motion to pay the bills list A.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney? Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
B is resolution to payments of list from April 26th, 2023. Commissioner Space will abstain. Can I have a motion to pay bills list B?
So moved.
Mr. Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Abstain.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
C is resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriations of 2023 Social Services Fund operating budget for the County of Sussex. And Resolution D is authorize emergency temporary appropriations of 2023 operating budget for the County of Sussex. I get a motion to approve Resolutions C and D.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Commissioner Space, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
16 is personnel. We have one personnel. This is personnel agenda from April 26th, 2023. I have a motion to adopt the personnel agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Space, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right. Number 17, administrative report.
Thank you, sir. Again, I just want to reiterate the great efforts from the senior services group, human services group, today at the veterans. Rayanne, thank you. Lorraine, Christine, please say hi to and congratulate Sheila as well. It was very well-received, very professionally put upon, very well-spoken. Everything was done at top-notch, and we got nothing but great remarks from everybody that came to us. So again, great job. ARPA, small business, tonight, the bill list is a little lighter than normal. We authorized, thank you for approving the bill list. We got $91,000 going out this time to small businesses. I do have to announce that May 10th is going to be a huge one. We've been approving a lot of POs for May 10th, and if everything goes as hoil, we will have, we will breach the $1 million mark after May 10th of dispersed funds to county businesses. So that is a good effort so far. The next two things I have, I think we should probably bring up or discuss in new business, but let me give you the topics of them for the commissioners to consider. One of which is, we've got a request from our friends at Hoppecon Police Department to put up these devices that go up on signs to read license plates. And they've asked us to have, to permit them to go on our signs on county roads that flow through Hoppecon. This normally is just a permitting process. They send a permit up, and we give them the okay from our engineering department, but we felt this was more of a policy issue that we may want to discuss before we just unilaterally approve that on our signs. So I'd like in new business to have a discussion about that from the commissioners and guide us one way or the other, do we want to do that or not?
Go ahead.
Are you asking for a decision on this tonight?
I think we need to give engineering guidance on whether to let the application go through, or do we have an opinion that that's something the board doesn't want to do? Instead of we do a lot of work on it, I think we need to get ahead of it now, is my point.
Did they need, they need this right away? They're looking for something right away?
I don't think it's emergent, no. I don't think this is something that has to be done this week or next week, but they have asked, and we want to get back to them, so.
I would like an opportunity to understand the device, what it does, what it's for. It may be fine, but I really would like to talk.
Yeah, and I agree, Herb, and I wanted Ron to bring this up, whether he did administration or new business, just to put that on your radar. You know, it's got some good, it's got some bad, in my eyes.
Sounds more like Big Brother watching another, another way.
You could definitely take it as that.
I personally don't like it.
Well, listen, just ponder it, and then we can talk.
I'll be in contact with the chief, I'll be with Megan, and I'll get all that.
How many were they looking for?
I have no idea. I haven't seen.
Well, again, let's, let's keep going with the meeting. We'll get that information, and we'll disperse it while Christina disperses it, and then you can read a little bit more and get the information. You're looking for or ask any questions?
Yeah, and I'll get the information.
If we want to go that route, we could bring it up for the next meeting.
Be educated. The second one is, I would like to get the approval, and do this in new business as well. Our friends in Wantage, they are under a problem that they have with their current gas system. They have underground tanks that they're going to have to remove, and the DEP is not going to allow them to put new tanks in. So what that means is they've had to order above-ground tanks for their fuel supply. They would like the county to go into a shared service agreement with them, with allowing them to get gas from us, they would pay us, we do a FOB with them, we know what gallons they are, we charge them that market value, and then we add a 2% administrative fee for that for a period of about three to five months. We do this as a consumable payout, a consumable rate, so it's a shared service of that. We've done that many times in the county, but with Sparta and other areas of that. So I'd like to have the go-ahead to proceed with writing that shared service agreement and get that out to Wantage and have it ready for the next meeting.
Okay. We'll bring that up.
Bring it up in new business. And only, last thing I have, Commissioner Carney commented on the guardrails. Everybody to the public, please be, please be careful, let them stay up at least a week before we hit them again, so. They seem that, all our new guardrails seem to have targets. They get hit just about the time we get them finished.
And they're, and they're very expensive.
Yeah, always the same spot, always. That's why we have the warrant for the guardrail, and that's why they get put up. Yeah. So Commissioner, that's all I, thank you.
Thank you. 18 is county council report.
I have nothing right now.
All right. 19, does anybody have any unfinished business? All right, just to, number 20 is new business. I just want to, I think we, you want to, we'll make a motion to table the Hoppecon request for now, that way we can all digest that, what they're looking for.
Yeah, I think so. There are a lot of.
Especially with nothing to read.
Unknowns. Yeah, yeah. No problem. I mean, I have to approve these things on the interstates and deal with Hope, so I'd kind of like to know what we're doing.
Right, understood. All right, so I'll make a motion to table Hoppecon's request for, what is it called again?
It's license plate readers.
License plate readers. Have a second?
I'm sorry, you're.
I'm going to move it. Dawn will, uh, second that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstain, carries. Okay. Um, the shared service with, with Wantage for the fueling station, I will make that motion as well to set up a shared service for them.
A second.
For temporarily.
Yep.
Uh, Commissioner Space will second. Another all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain, carries. Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
More new business that we have?
I do have new business.
Commissioner Fantasia?
District twenty-four. Um, I was notified on Friday that Assemblyman Parker Space is currently drafting legislation to prohibit the Murphy administration from implementing a vehicle mileage tax in black boxes, uh, in vehicles, and I think we should back him up. I have a draft, um, resolution to take down. Apparently, spell check changes the word mileage with an E, M-I-L-E-A-G-E to M-I-L-A-G-E. I guess that's an alternate spelling. Microsoft hasn't caught up. It looks weird to me, so, uh, that would need a change. Um, so, uh, the, the premise of this, um, is we're hearing that, uh, the Transportation Trust Fund spending is up for reauthorization next year and, uh, that would put our road funding at risk. Um, over the course of the current TTF, the Sussex County has directly received, uh, thirty point four million dollars and our municipalities have received twenty-three million dollars. And all that could be at risk. At the same time, the Murphy administration wants to eventually ban new vehicles who use gas and diesel and force us to use electric vehicles. At the same time, since electric vehicles don't pay to maintain our roads, the Murphy administration is scheming to force us to pay vehicle mileage tax by putting black boxes in our cars and trucks, which actually I find absurd. So I would like to read this, uh, into record for your, uh, review and consideration, read it out loud to you. This is a resolution opposing a mileage-based vehicle tax.
Excuse me, real quick.
Yes.
How many of those copies do you have?
Uh, I have some.
The only reason I ask is if there's anybody for the public that wants, that's interested.
Would like to read along?
That would like to read along. Yeah, if you don't mind.
Done on the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Anybody want? Want one? Just a gander.
So.
All right, I apologize, Dawn.
No worries.
If somebody wants to read along.
So resolution opposing a mileage-based vehicle tax. Whereas transportation projects in the state of New Jersey are funded through the state's Transportation Trust Fund and a constitutionally dedicated tax on motor vehicle fuels. And whereas the Transportation Trust Fund provides funding to state-operated highways and bridges and provides vital funding to county and municipal governments to help stabilize our property taxes. And whereas the Transportation Trust Fund spending plan has to be renewed by the governor and the legislature in twenty twenty-four, and all leading fiscal and transportation experts predict there will be no need for higher motor fuel taxes. And whereas the Murphy administration and Democrat legislative majorities have decided to subsidize expensive and dangerous electric vehicles, EVs, with our tax dollars. And whereas Governor Murphy is attempting to prohibit the sale of new motor vehicles that operate on traditional fuels such as gasoline and diesel without approval of the legislature and/or the voters and without the constitutional or statutorily authority to do so. And whereas owners of EVs already receive major taxpayer subsidies in the form of state and federal tax credits and an exemption from the state's sales tax, EV owners do not contribute to the Transportation Trust Fund. Whereas in anticipation of a state-forced one hundred percent electric vehicle future, unelected bureaucrats are scheming to impose a mileage-based vehicle tax that would force invasive black boxes in all vehicles in order to charge a tax based on the miles traveled in every vehicle. And whereas these black boxes would not only raise taxes on all vehicle owners, but also violate a vehicle owner's right to privacy. And whereas in twenty twenty-two, New Jersey, as part of a consortium of seventeen states in Washington DC called the Eastern Transportation Coalition, T E T C, is testing a mileage-based vehicle tax for potential future implementation. And whereas the decision to begin this testing was made by bureaucrats with no legislative or public input. And whereas the Sussex County Board of Commissioners recognizes that our residents have some of the longest commuting times and distances in the state and is extremely concerned that a ban on traditionally powered vehicles and implementation of a mileage-based vehicle tax would have a negative effect on our residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sussex County Commissioners that the Board opposes a ban on vehicles powered by traditional fuels such as gasoline and diesel. And the Board is opposed to the implementation of any mileage-based vehicle tax and the forced use of vehicle black boxes, whether implemented on the state, regional, or national level. And the Board calls upon the legislature to extend the life of the Transportation Trust Fund without raising motor fuels taxes. And the Board calls upon the governor and the legislature to eliminate taxpayer subsidies for electric vehicles and look at non-intrusive ways to make EV owners pay their fair share without negatively affecting the vast majority of computers and the taxpayers.
Very good. Crazy, crazy world we live in, crazy state.
Thoughts?
My first thought is, I hate to do this to the crowd and obviously I'm not going to make my record of shortest meeting ever. Maybe we take a good five, ten minutes, a little recess, just digest this, take a look at it again if you have to read it.
Guys, I think in transparency, look, I like this. This is good.
Yeah.
This is something I've been screaming about, but I think we should put it out there so the public can speak about it at the next meeting. In transparency, we're, we're not going to just do this tonight, right?
Well, we're going to have an open public session, so anybody who wants to speak about it.
But it wasn't on the agenda, is what I'm saying. Nobody had a chance to.
It still doesn't matter, we'll still be able to, to, the people who are here, you're saying the people who aren't here, that's what.
Yeah, I mean, what, that's what I would do if, if we all claim to be transparent. Look, I like this. This is everything I've wanted. I've got, but I would at least, oh, put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, well, I, I still would like to look at this again.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
First time I'm, I'm looking at it. If we could take, if I could get a motion just to take a five-minute recess.
Yeah.
Love to go to the bathroom while we're at it. What do you got?
I'm not quite sure what it is you want to do. Do you want us to vote on this tonight?
I didn't make a motion. I'm just saying that we just got this. This is the first time I'm seeing this, so to digest it, I would like to take a five or ten minute recess to look it over. You don't have to look it over, you could, your mind might be made up. I don't know. I have no motion on the floor whatsoever. I would like to read this again because it takes me a little bit to digest and I might have a question. So if we are going to do anything, I want to do it, I'm going to read it myself again.
I don't blame you.
I'm not saying we're going to do anything.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm just saying I'd like to read it, so if we could take a five-minute, ten-minute recess, I'd like to read it and then we can go to the next. Can I have a second on my motion?
A second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
This is the concept.
Can I get a motion to open a public session back open, please?
So moved.
Commissioner Space, have a second. Commissioner Hayden, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're back in the session. Where, where, where are we at, Dawn? You, you presented this, so what are you, what are you thinking?
Well, the way I look at it is that this is a draft. Um, I like it as is. I did, uh, have it passed through legal. I would like to give everyone an opportunity to digest it and have the public to be able to make comments on it probably more robustly because it really is a, uh, it, it's hefty. There's a lot of information in here, but I do suggest that it's up at our next meeting and if we're going to act, we act swiftly because again, we like to do things in conjunction with, uh, the District Twenty-four office and back that up. I mean, we have the electric vehicle subsidy, which ran out of money last year, right? And now is up in this budget, right? So when we're looking for ways to cut the budget, there's that piece. There's the piece about switching and, and banning our, uh, vehicles with traditional fuels. Um, and it's the, this black box thing, when Jill just said Big Brother before, it's the exact same thing. It's literally trying to put a tracker in every vehicle and there was that pilot program that they kept quiet, but we know about it. And, uh, these things are, decisions are made by the DOT. These decisions are not made by the legislature. And I would assume, you know, with, with the governor's administration's approval. So I know, you know, what's happening down in Trenton with this and I would like us to, to take a strong stand against this, so.
Perfect.
Just I, if I could, has anybody talked to First Energy and JCP and all about this? Because they don't have no way in.
Have the infrastructure to do it.
The infrastructure to even divide that. I had to steal all the power out of the police department in Hope Con to put a two-twenty station in because there was no supply for it. We got one car and that's all we could, that's all we could charge.